Beginning at a point approximately 75 feet northeast of the center line, through the intersection of Lancaster Street, and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northwest direction, National Grid to relocate pole number one, 35 feet close to Lancaster Street, to allow for a customer to install a new driveway, new pole to be 50 feet away from Lancaster Street. At the last meeting, we requested further time because we did not have information as to the owner of the property. I'll refer to the clerk to see if we've had any luck on...
No.
Is there anybody here tonight from Verizon?
National Grid. National Grid. National Grid and Verizon.
Right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the last time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? I'm going to go to members of my committee, Councilor Cormier.
I can tell you that I did, I've gone over to the property twice. And from, and after we'd gotten the map on the last time, I walked it through. I didn't see a problem. I know we were concerned with it being closer to, maybe a little too close to Wheeler Street. I walked it out, so it wasn't exact measurements. I thought that it looked okay. I was hoping that we would have a little more input today so we could know exactly where it's going to go. Like I said, I did a walkthrough with my own kind of measurements. I didn't think it was going to interfere with Wheeler Street. I thought it looked okay, but like I said, I really wish they would have come in and we would have had some, a little bit of a better idea.
Councilor Ottinger?
Yep. I agree with, you know, Councilor Cormier. I guess my only question is, and I think this was raised at the last meeting, is what is the ultimate purpose of moving this pole? Is it, you know, for a driveway or is it for a business? You know, and I'm not sure that that's our purpose of our meeting tonight, but it's something I would like to have more clarification on.
Well, I think it is a consideration, and if I could...
Sure, please.
I did speak with the building inspector and went through the planning board, and a number of years ago, there was a proposal, the same owner, from what I understand, that owns the old industrial Hardwiz property on Johnson and Lancaster, also owns that house now.
Okay.
And there were plans put in a couple, a few years ago, to put a strip mall in there. And if that's the case, it's going to make a big difference in the traffic on Wheeler Street.
Right.
So I would still like to give them the benefit of the doubt at this point, and either give it further time, whatever the committee would like to do, further time, or give it leave to withdraw without prejudice. The owners are aware?
They are. That's what we just got clarification on for you.
National Grid did contact the owners directly, and I sent out a letter, and National Grid said that they are aware and that the ball's in their court, and that National Grid was done, and it was up to them to contact us.
So I'd like to give it further time until we, until we get that information.
We'll leave the hearing open.
We'll leave the hearing open.
Okay, very good.
All right. Thank you.
For the police station project as well as demolition in that, for that same project, I'll read it. In accordance with Section 3-9 of Lemmister City Charter, a public hearing will be held on Monday, April 22 at 6:40 PM in the Council Chamber's 25 West Street, Lemmister, Mass. Subject to the hearing will be the following loan order. Ordered, the mayor is authorized to acquire by purchase gifting indoor eminent domain three parcels of land located on Central Street, namely 106 Central Street, 112 Central Street, and 116-124 Central Street, which parcels are shown on Assessor's Map 93 as parcels 5, 6, and 7, for general municipal purposes, including, without limitation, for police station purposes, on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems in the best interests of the city, and further to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effect said acquisition and as funding therefore. Further ordered, that the sum of $2 million is appropriated for the cost of the foregoing acquisition and development of the property for police station purposes, including without limitation for the cost of remediation, demolition, site preparation, and/or design, and costs incidental or related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow $2 million in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, in accordance with Chapter, General Laws, Chapter, Section 44, Section 20, and further ordered, that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of project costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. I'll ask members of the public, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of C-06? Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak in favor of C-06? And one more time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in favor of C-06? Is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-06? A second time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-06? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C-06? Feeling that, I'll turn to members of my committee. Does anybody have anything that they want to add at this juncture? Councilor Cormier? Any members of the council in general? I think we can close the hearing then. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Frida?
No, I just want to say that I'm glad this is corrected and we can move forward.
Me too. Has anybody else have anything else? I think we can close the hearing.
Correct. Thank you. Hearing's closed.
Yeah. Yeah. This is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given if necessary. The first person who has signed up is Peter Campabasso.
Good evening, members of the Lemmister City Council. My name is Peter Campabasso. My address is 3 Park Street, Lemmister. I'm here to speak on Petition 19-19. I just wanted to point out to the councilors that from the last meeting, we did follow through with the mayor's office. We amended the host agreement for Middlesex Integrative pursuant to the council's vote, and the amendment has been signed by all parties and filed with the city clerk. We also worked on the letter of non-opposition as required, and we did submit a letter in draft that we understand and believed will be accepted by the Cannabis Control Commission. So those were the two points that were addressed at the last meeting when the petition was approved. We have complied with them, so I would ask the council to approve the letter and format, and what I've asked the city clerk to do is simply transfer the draft letter we submitted on to the City of Lemmister Stationery so that council president could sign it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
We qualify that Mr. Campabasso's statement is accurate, 100%, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Ed Bartlett.
My name is Ed Bartlett. I'm the CFO of Middlesex Integrative Medicine. And just to bring you up to date where we are, the letter of non-opposition that we need from Lemmister is we're also working on the one for Waltham. We submitted a special permit. We've had a public hearing, that's been closed, so we're working through some details there, and we're hoping to bring the sighting profile with the two letters of non-opposition from both communities as soon as possible. That's where we are, then waiting for the state to act on both those letters, to give us a provisional license for Waltham. Also, just in terms of Lemmister facility, we're hoping to be concluding construction by the end of May, early June, so we're on schedule to make that come into play. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person that has signed up for the public forum. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second call, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. The meeting will begin at 7:30. We have two interviews, one at 6:50, one at 6:55, but before we begin, excuse me, 7:00. But before we begin, we're going to be awarding citations, and we're going to do this at this moment. Okay, we have the St. Ann's CYO champions here this evening with coaches, family and friends, so Councilor Frida, I'll let you lead the charge. If you want to just go shoulder to shoulder right around in a half shell, that would be great. You can hit, we're going to hand Councilor Feckley the citations. Councilor Frida will read their names, hand them out.
Hi, guys.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked to have St. Ann's CYO come in tonight, as they've made a lot of us proud. Councilor Bonanza and I have been hearing on a weekly basis from Father Franny, the progress to get them to where they ended up, and it's a good point. We're very proud of them. They've not only done well for their school, they've done well for their church, and have done well for their faith. And I'm happy to have them come in tonight, and I want to introduce Coach Dennis Donlin and Coach Chris Pompey, and I know Coach Joel...
Joel had to leave.
Joel had to leave, okay. So Dennis, I'm just going to turn it over to you for just a second to just give an overview as to how they succeeded.
Okay, it was actually very difficult because when you don't have good kids and you have to really coach them up.
A lot of praying?
A lot of praying and hoping for the best. No, it's, the idea, it was pretty good because I had just gotten back from overseas, and Chris and Joel had taken the team for the first week, and we went and right into practice and to the games, which was nice. But as I said, it's very easy to do when you have all sorts of a bunch of talented kids, who are actually good kids, who actually get along and do whatever you ask them to do. So they did a lot of hard work, and as I said, we started the season, we were just trying to get through the season over at St. Bernard's, which the boys did go undefeated and win that championship, and then going down to the NEQT's. Now, this is the first school in about a dozen years that's won the NEQT's for St. Ann's, and then to actually go over to win the New England Championships up in New Hampshire. So we actually played Connecticut teams and then all CYO comers in New England.
And still undefeated.
And still undefeated, at 17-0. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. I just want to point out, as Dennis mentioned, he just got back from Kuwait after serving 18 months?
Oh, no, it was only nine months this time.
Nine months, oh, only nine months. And everyone knows Chris Pompey from Wyman's, who's a great supporter in this city as well, and Joel that just had to leave was Bolton Orchard's. So everybody's busy, but they give their time to coach the kids as well. So what I'd like to do, guys, I'm going to read your names, and forgive me if I don't get them all right, but I'm going to try. And Councilor Feckley, the vice president, is going to give you your certificate, and let me read one. It says, "City of Lemmister City Council certifies awarded the certificate by the Lemmister City Council on this 22nd day of April 2019 for their outstanding accomplishment, becoming the 2019 CYO champions," and it's signed by the full city council. So I'm going to start with Adrick Adonteng. Donovan Campbell. Donovan's not here tonight. Clavin Jean Rizmay. And Coach Joel O'Toole just left, so we'll... Coach Dennis Donlin. And Coach Christopher Pompey. And I do want to say that Bobby French, the principal of St. Ann's, sent her regret that she couldn't make it tonight, but she's got a bunch of happy kids going back to report. Did we forget anybody?
We need one.
We have a couple of boys who didn't get it. Who didn't get theirs? Three of them.
Okay, well, make sure we get the...
Coach, can you introduce them, and then we'll get citations afterwards?
We'll get citations and get them too. I apologize.
Okay, it's Will Sostiel.
David Nermi.
We'll get those to you as soon as possible. All right.
Thank you. Congratulations, guys. Keep up the good work, coaches. Thank you.
Thanks, Paris.
We'll see you guys later.
For April 22, 2019, the City Council is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll begin with the roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Thank you. Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Ottinger.
Present.
Councilor Bonanza.
Present.
Councilor Feckley.
Present.
Councilor Shelle Fozefer.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
I should record us here. We have eight members present this evening. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the City of Lemmister City Council meeting of April 8, 2019, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the minutes? So move. Thank you. Do we have a motion for recess?
Motion.
Cormier seconded. Councilor Pauline Cormier, so move. Here we go. Okay, we are in recess. I'm going to yield the floor to the chairwoman of Ways and Means for the interviews.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a, an interview for the mayor's appointment of Richard Dondaro to the Board of Assessors, term to expire April 15, 2022. Let me make sure those, those are working. All right. And accompanied by the assessor for the City of Lemmister, William Mitchell, as well. Thank you very much. So Rick, you are a familiar face for the council, obviously, but I know that this is a reappointment, and in some ways, reappointments, we just, you know, further time them, I mean, regular course them and then just do it. But in this instance, since we have you down here, and since you really are, in many ways, the public face of the assessor's office, right? You're out in the, in the field, you know, I see you out there many times, you know, and so people should get to know who you are, and a little bit about your background, what you've been doing since you came on to the Board of Assessors, and, you know, what the Board of Assessors does. I think that, you know, many people don't realize what you guys do, that it's very, very important for the city's financial strength, okay, and health. So do you want to just go?
Here I am, okay.
Yep.
Well, I got into this field, I'd say, in 2001. Started as a real estate appraiser, as a trainee. I updated my trainee license once. I did get my full certification 2007, and I also went for my FHA certification. I did that until about 2014, till I got the position as one of the assistant assessors here in the City of Lemmister. And the Board of Assessors, we have many roles. My role primarily is inspections. We do sale review inspections when a property sells in the city. We like to go out and make sure the information is accurate on the property. We also do permit inspections. If someone pulls a permit for their property of a building to alter the structure in any way, we go out and update those records. We also do abatement inspections. If someone doesn't agree with their value, we go out and re-inspect the property, reevaluate the property, take a look at our assessment. And we're basically doing those things simultaneously with serving the public, where people are coming in the office all the time, whether it's an excise abatement or questions about their property. And so it's about, pretty much a balance, 50-50, in the office and out in the field. So the, out in the field, we're basically gathering data, and then when you get in to the building, you're entering the data into our appraisal software. So at that point, we're basically checking the value of these properties on an everyday basis. In the fall, we reevaluate the town on a whole, but on a daily basis, we're working with values and making sure all the data is accurate.
Yep, and that's fair for everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So how often would you say, so if you came to my house and did an evaluation, then when would you come back?
If it was a cyclical inspection, that's what I left out. We do cyclical inspections. Department of Revenue would like us to visit each property at least once every nine years. So if it was a cyclical inspection in your case, and everything looked accurate, we would update the records if there were any inadequacies or anything was different, and then we probably wouldn't see you for nine years if all went well. If you pulled a permit, or if the property's sold, or if you didn't agree with your value, then we'd be there for those reasons.
And you're looking for improvements on those values, on the properties too, right?
We are, in any direction. I mean, sometimes a property, folks don't do anything to it. So as time goes on, you could be there, let's say, nine years ago, they did a lot of updates, then you show up nine years later, well, what you thought was in great condition may be average condition or needing more updates.
Okay, so you're looking for maybe something that's less valuable and also something that's more valuable.
Depreciation. Depreciation is happening as soon as you put on that new item. So we're monitoring that on a daily basis.
Okay. And when you say "we," you mostly mean you, right?
We, we work as a board. The Board of Assessors, the three of us, we have a real strong team, where we are in the fold on everything.
But are you on the field mostly? Are you the one that...
Actually, no. Actually, Bill Conner, the other assistant assessor, he does permits and cyclicals, and I do sale reviews.
Okay.
So we're more or less sharing that.
Okay. Bill, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit, you know, Rick's been with us for five years now. This is his second reappointment at this stage. People don't realize that the, we are the Board of Assessors, the three of us, and so the appointments come, we are altered every year. So that way, one of us is getting appointed every year. That's by statute and law that we do that.
Yep.
And it's followed by an oath of office that we take, because we take it very seriously, that we value properties equitably across the municipality. One thing I wanted to add to Rick's, he's an asset to our office, there's no question about it. That's why I'm here tonight, I wanted to... That's why I'm here tonight, I wanted to speak on behalf of Rick and let you all know that, you know, there's a lot of things we do in City Hall, as you know. You've seen me down here many a times, besides being the Assessor, procuring police property, putting in a new telephone system, IT infrastructure, that kind of work, you know. Here, it's a big team effort in City Hall, so there's a lot of things I'm pulled away from to do, those things to get that done, and I wouldn't be able to do that if Rick wasn't in the office. He is a definite asset to us, keeps everything going, keeps the machine and the car going, and he does a great job with it. And everybody that comes in the office loves him, and they ask for him. And it's great, because he's been here five years now. He is a familiar face to the community, and they're comfortable with that. You know, he's very, very trustworthy, and it's a burden off of me having to worry about someone in the field not doing their job. So he does a fantastic job, great at it, so I couldn't do my job without him, so I just wanted to add that, so.
That's great. Good words. Well, I know, I mean, I know as a council that we take great heed in what, you know, both say to us when you come before us, you know, about tax evaluations and so forth.
Yeah, and we do, you know, I believe in a team approach too, you know, when we talk about who's out in the field. I don't segregate the jobs in the field versus the office. We all do have a team approach. That way, when someone does come in for an abatement, we're all looking at it. You know, we are a board, we want to make sure that we vet it carefully, that we're looking at every aspect of that valuation. Rick may have been the person out there that inspected the property, can give us insight to the physical data or the shape of the building, then we decide, as a group, how we're going to attack that, what we need to do. And we do have a, in fact, I think this Wednesday, we have an appointment with DOR. They're coming in for our five-year recertification evaluation project this year, and so we've got that starting up this Wednesday. So it is a big team effort, you know, and I have a great group, and our two clerks, Marilyn and Linda, have been there for a very long time, good support staff as well, and they do a great job letting us do our job and handling a lot of the foot traffic in the office. So I have a great team, and I appreciate all of them, so.
That's great. Well, it's great that the two of you came tonight, because, you know, it is important for the public to see who you guys are and, you know, what you do, you know, especially all the good work that you do. So I'm going to ask if Councilor Frida has any questions or comments for you?
Sure. I certainly don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I've known Rich for quite some time, back in the day when he was an appraiser. I know the business a little bit, and I know he knows the business. His professionalism has been outstanding. I've heard it from a number of people that have had to deal with the office, and happy to have him on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors have any comments or questions for Rich? Councilor Cormier.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but certainly a comment. You know, it seems like every year, right after the first of the year, I always get a call or two about a tax bill, and, you know, I direct them right to your office, ask for, you know, if they make an appointment, tell them everybody in there is very approachable, and I usually, I don't think I've ever heard back from anybody after I've referred them to your office, and I think that says a lot. You know, they might not like the final answer, you know, after a review, but certainly they understand, or they get a review and they find out that something was, you know, to their favor. So I think it says a lot about all the hard work that goes on in there, and the public relations piece, which is very important. So I just want to thank you, you know, for all you do, and I certainly support your reappointment. Thank you very much.
A true professional, and you truly represent the city with a touch of class, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
When you have people that come to your office, sometimes their life is in turmoil, they're trying to make ends meet, and you, in a very polite and respectful way, deal with individuals and families as needed, and I appreciate that on behalf of the people I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And Bill, thank you very much. Did you want to say anything else and wrap it up?
No, I want to thank you for having us and giving us up. I think it was a good idea to have Rick down here, because it is important that people see his face and understand that he's the guy out there on the boots on the ground.
And he takes credit for all the good work that he does, yes.
Absolutely. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the City of Leominster.
Yeah, well, certainly, I'm sure that's what's going to happen, so I don't think we want to lose you, so.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second interview for the Mayor's Appointment of Vicki Briggs to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2022. Ms. Briggs, would you like to come sit right there?
Okay. Thanks, dear.
How are you?
Good. How are you guys?
Good. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
Good. So by way of introduction, I'm Gail Feckley. I'm the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, and on the committee tonight is Councilor Frida. She is the clerk, and one of our other councilors is out tonight, so. So we're just going to ask you a few questions about your background, why you're interested in serving with the Cultural Commission, and what you feel as though you could contribute to that commission.
Well, I have to say, for most of my life, I've lived and/or worked in this community, and I think it's a vibrant community, and I love being a part of it, and if I can do something else to make it better, I'm very much interested. I can't say that I have a lick of artistic ability in me, but I am enthusiastic about arts and culture, and, you know, I enjoy it very much, and I feel I can bring that enthusiasm to the LCC and the residents who participate in the cultural events in Leominster.
And you have quite a bit of background in community services.
Yes.
Resume, if you're looking to be in Hope.
Correct. Hands-on, all the way up.
People and their interests, and they're really, I mean, certainly the Cultural Commission, you know, includes that, you know, people's, culture is a daily thing that we should be enjoying and subjected to. And also, I'm very interested in your education. You have a BS in zoology from the University of Massachusetts.
I do, yes.
Yeah, that's very interesting.
Yep.
Can you say just a little bit about how that?
Sure. You know, that was my passion early on, to work with animals. When I got out of school, I fell into human services, and that kind of just reeled me in, and I found my new passion. You never know where the road's going to take you.
No, you don't, yeah. Yeah, I work at Pittsburgh State, and one of our majors is human services, so that's something that I get involved in, and sometimes you find some of the human services majors go towards the veterinary end of it. So it kind of, there is a connection, yeah, somehow. All right, well, I'm going to see if Councilor Frida has any questions or comments for you?
Sure.
Hey, Vicki.
How are you?
Again, I've known Vicki for a number of years, back in the day of my being on the board of the Beacon of Hope, when she first came aboard. Again, we're talking about professionalism. We've been very lucky in this city. Mostly, everyone that's come to serve, one way or another, has been a great representative of the community. Obviously, with the success of the Beacon of Hope, it's a great credit to you, so I'm happy to support this appointment.
Any other councilors have any comments or questions? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you tonight, Vicki. I know Vicki from the great work that she's done at the Beacon of Hope, and it's wonderful to see you down here. I think you bring a lot of great energy and real talent, I think, to the Cultural Commission, so thank you for coming down, and thank you for volunteering to serve.
Thank you, sir.
Any other councilors? President Mashin.
What a pleasure it is to vote for you tonight. It really is. You've been a guardian angel of that program for a long time, and the late Roland Lane, who was a real advocate of the Beacon of Hope and special education in the community, just spoke so highly of you in a conversation I had recently with him before his passing, so I just want to share that with you. You also have been involved with the Cultural Commission, because you do have a team of participants at the Beacon of Hope that actually wrote a grant and did a photography project, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you share with the council a little bit about that project? Because I was blown away when I saw it.
I actually participated in that photography class myself. It was amazing. We had not only our participants, but people from the community come, and it was about a six-week class with a professional photographer. We learned about lighting and composition, and it was just amazing, the work that people put out. And we put in another grant to continue where we left off, and we'll be offering that this summer, so I invite all of you to participate.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Vicki, any other councilors have any comments or questions? Well, thank you very much for coming down, and I want to mention that, you know, you are the Executive Director of the Beacon of Hope.
Correct.
I want to make sure that the public knows that, and it seems that your background certainly could fit in many, many important ways into the Cultural Commission, so, you know, I'd be more than happy to approve your, ask for the approval of your appointment to the commission.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And if you'd like to wait, I'll ask the President to move that up on the agenda. We have a little, a few items we have to take care of first, and then when you're approved, the Assistant City Clerk will swear you in.
Okay, very good.
Okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All set? Any other business while we're off session? Okay, we're back in session. If there's no objection to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, we'll take this up right now. Go ahead.
Okay, so we do have the reappointment of Richard Dondaro to the Board of Assessors, term to expire April 15, 2022, and Rick was down here tonight with the Chief Assessor, Bill Mitchell, who spoke very highly of him, and they spoke about working as a team, and I think we all know how valuable Rick is to the workings of the City of Leominster, so I'd be honored to ask that the council approve his appointment to the Board of Assessors, and I would ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you. You have the floor to Councilor Frida.
I agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, we have a unanimous recommendation to confirm the Mayor's Appointment of Richard Dondaro to the Board of Assessors, term to expire April 15, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation read for confirmation on Mr. Dondaro. Are there any questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councilor Feckley.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I should record, yay, by a vote of eight to nothing. Confirmation has taken place. Thank you, sir, for serving the community. And now you have the floor back to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means for Ms. Briggs.
Thank you. Yes, we did have Ms. Briggs down just a few minutes ago for an interview. Her resume is very interesting. She has done, she's the Executive Director of the Beacon of Hope, as we mentioned. She's worked with the Arc of Opportunity. She's involved in program development, volunteer coordination, fundraising, grant writing, and it goes on and on, and I think that the city and the Cultural Commission could definitely benefit from her summary qualifications and her interest in volunteering for the city, and she's a very, very lovely woman, so I'm, again, very happy to ask that the council confirm her appointment, and I will ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you. You have the floor to Councilor Frida.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, please, thank you. Madam Chair, please requalify.
Yes, we have a unanimous recommendation to confirm the Mayor's Appointment of Vicki Briggs to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April 15, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor, the recommendation for confirmation on Vicki Briggs to the Cultural Commission. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Feckley.
Yay.
Councilor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councilor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
I should record, yay, by a vote of eight to nothing. Confirmation has taken place. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We're now going to go back to the calendar. We have communications from the May, beginning with appointments. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
I'm going to accept the records, yes. Mr. President?
Yes.
I think you need to accept the records first.
We did.
Did we do that yet?
We did.
We did it. Oh, I'm sorry.
And if there's no objection, I'd like to take the appointments in block. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Scott Simpson to the Board of Appeals, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Michelle Hagstrom to the Board of Appeals, alternate member, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of John Diggins to the Council on Aging, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Donna Smith to the Council on Aging, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Phyllis Gagne to the Council on Aging, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Maria Maldari to the Council on Aging, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of David Cormier to the Disability Commission, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Paul Kennedy to the Forest Warden, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of James Despo to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Maureen Donatelli to the Recreation Commission, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Ann Mahan to the Registarians of Voters, term to expire 4/15/2022. A measure confirming the Mayor's Appointment of Bruce Lambert to the Veterans Care of Graves, term to expire 4/15/2022.
Before we begin, were some of these reappointments, or they are new appointments?
They're all reappointments.
There are reappointments? Okay, very good. We're all set with that, correct? Okay. I'm going to yield the floor in block to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President, these are first time on the calendar, so regular course, please.
Thank you. Any interviews there?
I feel as though these individuals have been on their commissions either for quite a while, or we have just recently interviewed some of them, so I will defer to the other member of my committee, if she would like to interview anybody, or regarding on the council, if wanted to interview anybody in particular.
Councilor Frida?
No.
We're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, so this will be in block, regular course?
Regular course.
Councilor, regular course on the appointments in block. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to page four.
Yes.
Anything else?
I'd like to stop.
Good.
C-68, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $20,400 to the ITTF expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 68 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 68. Thank you. Now move to Communication 69.
C-69, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $12,000 to the municipal building maintenance expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication 69, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 69. Thank you. Now move on to petitions. First time on the calendar, beginning with petition 53-19.
53-19, Music Media Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for Gordon LaSalle music located at 875 Merriam Ave, Suite 135.
If there's no objection, we'll do some block down to 56-19.
No objection.
Please continue.
54-19, Adele Martin Farrell, renew the second-hand dealer's license for cold storage antiques and collectibles located at 35 Grove Ave. 55-19, Everything Cutie Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for Cutie Petodies located at 1021 Central Street. 56-19, Everything Cutie Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for Cutiecks located at 37 Mechanic Street.
Petitions 53-19 through 56-19, I refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regular course in block 53 through 56-19. Thank you. We'll now move on to matters before the City Council. We'll begin with the city's financial report. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1, 2018, with a balance in our stabilization fund of There's been $4,743,264 in additions since then, and in subtractions on matters already approved or pending, those total $4,115,120, leaving a current balance in the stabilization fund of $15,742, $742,900.
So $15 million.
$15 million, yeah.
Correct, thank you. Thank you very much for the report. Any questions on the report? Councilor Frida? Councillor Frida?
I know I sound like a broken record through the chair. Do we have any idea about free cash? It has been months.
Yeah, I asked the mayor that question since the last meeting and he said, he told the comptroller to work day and night until it was done, so. It's not done as far as I know, so.
Right.
Do we have any idea why? I mean, is it school, last year it was school department?
I don't know why. I have no idea why.
It's getting, we're probably the only one in the state that doesn't have our free cash by now.
You're correct.
We're not going to have a lot of time to spend it.
No.
No, but I think there are a lot of contracts out that people can't pursue because they don't know what money they have.
It's an administrative process. It's basically out of our hands, unfortunately, and it's frustrating.
I know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the financial report? Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. We'll now move on to communication 53. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash 53, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $22,664 to the general fund, various salary and wages account is listed, same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. This is resulting from the monies necessary to implement the middle managers' union contract. It's broken down, there's collective bargaining expense of $2,600, building inspection salary and wages, $2,035, wire department salary and wages, $3,852, health department salary and wages, $4,542, plumbing department salary and wages, $1,577, assessors salary and wages, $3,485, conservation commission salary and wages, $1,257, and economic development salary and wages of $3,316, all totaling the amount requested of $22,664. Councilors should have attached to the communication a memo that outlines the salient provisions of the new contract with the middle managers. Most noteworthy, of course, is the wage concessions or increase, 2.5% retroactive to July 1st, 2018, another 2.5% on July 1, 2019, and a third 2.5% on July 1, 2020. Mr. President, would be my position to grant C dash 53, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to councillor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
The other member, councillor David Cormier.
I concur.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash 53.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant communication 53. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of 200, I'm sorry, $22,664 be appropriated to the general fund, various salary and wages account, as listed, same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read. Again, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to communication 67. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash 67, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $162,800 to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. We have a letter from the mayor dated April 4th, 2019, addressed to the council. Dear members of the city council, I respectfully request that an appropriation of $162,800 be made to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. And that's broken down between main office improvements, $85,000, paving of four roads in the amount of $18,600, and the construction of a columbarium in the amount of $59,200. Also attached to the mayor's letter is further breakdowns provided by the director of Public Works, Raymond Racine. $85,000 is to construct handicapped access to the administration building, as well as to conduct a variety of repairs to the Haas Chapel, which are broken down further in reports attached by Mr. McKenzie of McKenzie Engineering, or Mr. Reynolds, rather, of McKenzie Engineering, as well as a quote from a contractor. Relative to the four roads to be paved for $18,600, Mr. Racine indicates we are running out of space and are forced to sell lots and unpaved roadways. These roads are mainly mud and not very customer-friendly. Paving these areas will give us 120 lots, creating better accessibility. And then finally, on the columbarium, that's broken down in a quote from a company that would provide the actual columbarium of $34,200, as well as the foundation to place it on, which would estimate it to be, to cost $25,000, for a total of $59,200. Mr. Chairman, would be my position to grant C dash 67. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee. But let me add, just before you do that as well, that I requested from the treasurer the balances of the cemetery funds that we hold and trust. The perpetual care account, which this is proposed to come from, has, as of the end of last calendar year, $996,919.07. In the sale of lots account, has a similar amount as of the end of the calendar year of $962,977. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
The other member, councillor David Cormier?
Well, I agree with most of this. I do agree that the paving of roads and the columbariums, you know, taking the money out of where it's coming from is certainly an investment that we're going to get return on. Not too crazy about the $85,000 coming out of here. I don't think we support the rest of the building out of this account. But I certainly agree with the work that's got to be done. I can, I can go along with this, but I'm not too, like I said, I'm not too crazy about the $85,000 for those improvements coming out of this account for that, you know, for that building. But it is a one-time, you know, expenditure to make that much-needed, handicapped, accessible, you know, that building handicapped accessible. So I will go along with it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. Is the unanimous recommendation of finance to grant C dash 67?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant communication 67. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councillor Frida?
Is this a report that we have from October 26th from McKenzie Engineering?
You asking the question to the chairman?
Through the chair.
Sure, okay. Yes, councillor?
Yes, that's attached to this.
Is that, but has that work already been done? This is an additional, under 62?
This is additional to the, we, I believe we appropriated some money a month or two back. This is in addition to that.
And that was over $100,000 then? Almost $300,000?
I don't recall the exact number, to be honest with you.
It looks like so. I guess what I'm saying is, are we spending a half a million dollars on a?
No. No, not a half a million dollars.
Well, if you look at McKenzie Engineering.
Well, the quote that, the quote that-
It's like 135.
Yeah. The 135, I think is the-
134.7.
That, that work includes, I believe, work on the, on all of those three, not the paving and not the columbarium, but on the Haas Chapel, on the mausoleum, and on the admin building. I think all of that is included in that quote. If you look at the October 26th letter, he's talking about the chapel, the mausoleum, and the main office.
Councillor Frida, all set?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Cormier?
If I may, through the chair of the finance chair, I'm kind of wondering if we're piecemailing some of this, because I don't, I don't remember approving money for the mausoleum, because I think if we, I think if we did, I would have questioned why we were taking it out of perpetual care, because I believe, I believe the mausoleum has a fund of its own, or an endowment or revolving account, that has quite a bit of money in it, you know, that was put in there many, many, many years ago, decades ago, so that, you know, if things started breaking down, they had money to make these repairs. So I don't know if we're, I don't know if we've done any of that yet or not.
Well, the last communication involved the chapel itself, not the mausoleum and not the main or admin building.
Right.
So, so this, this is additional money that is tied into this. I mean, the letter I got indicates, you know, some of it, of course, is for the columbarium and for paving, but the main office improvements are $85,000. When I asked, when I asked for detail, I got all of this information.
Right.
I got the October 26th letter. I got McKenzie's, or the quote, and, which had a scope of work attached to it that involved all three of those elements, so.
I'm just thinking through the chair.
Sure.
I'm just thinking that maybe the mausoleum is coming down the pike, because I don't remember approving money for that. And it's not, and it's not in tonight's expenditure either.
We certainly didn't approve any money for the mausoleum.
We did not. And then, you know, and when and if we do, I think there's a separate account for that mausoleum and it's-
Well, we could check into that.
And it's got quite a bit of money.
Yeah, that's, we can look into that. And it's clear from McKenzie's report that the mausoleum's got some issues that need to be dealt with.
Right.
I mean, the whole place has got issues that need to be dealt with, frankly. So this is catch-up time and-
What I could do to help with the process, that's not really the question we have before us, but illegitimate statements and questions by councillors. We can request information regarding the capital outlay expenses, where they've been, where they need to go to put the cemetery in order. So it won't just become a down here. We might be able to anticipate that next year they need to do this or later on, this summer or fall, et cetera. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll request that information. Councillor Frida?
Yeah, Mr. President, if I recall, the last meeting, I asked to have an update on all the funds we spent on the mausoleum and the chapel.
Right.
And we didn't get anything.
Okay, we can, we can-
Can we give this further time?
I requested that.
It was requested. That's really up to the committee at this point. They have a recommendation on the floor.
We have a unanimous recommendation. I want to go forward with it.
Right, okay, all right.
I'm going to get a vote on it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Councillor Feckley?
So, at the last meeting, C-64, we granted the $85,000. So is that the same $85,000?
No, it's not.
Two different things altogether.
It's not.
Yeah, they're two different things altogether.
What was all?
Two different requests.
Yes, but it just seems curious, it's the same amount of money for the, for the administration building, it's $85,000, and C-64 is $85,000.
We, it's, it's challenging to work the answer this evening.
Yeah, I think so, too.
But I'll make it a point that we will get that information to you before the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll do the best we can to, to put it together. I'll work with the mayor's office and try to prioritize it as far as coming down here so we have a handle-
Yep.
-on that, on what's happening down there.
Yep.
What's been spent and what they're anticipating. I think we're all looking forward to improvements, because every Memorial Day, it gets a little challenging walking on those roads. You know, so I mean, just from the, from the asphalt itself and the expansion in the lots, I think that's very noteworthy. Never mind the renovations of the buildings and the other dwellings on campus. Do you have anything else on that? I think that's it. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Shellphozefah?
So the request for more information includes a breakdown of what we have already spent and approved.
Correct.
Because, you know, in looking at the, the engineering estimates, it's not clear to me what the last $85,000 matches up against. You know, because there's three separate quotes, right? The mausoleum, the main administration building, and the chapel. So we've approved money, I think, for the chapel last time. Tonight we have $85,000 that we're supposed to approve for-
For the admin building.
For the admin building, okay. So what would be helpful is to have those quotes and then the associated appropriations that we've made matched up against each one of those individual quotes, so that we know exactly where we are in each of those, because each of those costs are more than $85,000. So I don't even know where we are in terms of the overall cost of those projects.
We'll request something that's put together that makes sense.
Yep.
Is user-friendly as far as the interpretation.
Good, thank you.
Okay?
What I'm going to make a suggestion, why don't we get, why don't we have the director come down? Why don't we have Mr. Racine come down with the information? And then we can ask him some questions about the overall plan.
All right, so under new business, I will vote to have him down here. We're requesting information. I'll chat with him and we'll figure it out. Okay?
Yeah.
Good. And we'll do that in a timely fashion. I know they're straight out right now with spring projects, but if we can pull them in here, at his convenience, the next meeting or two. All right? Okay, good. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? Okay, again, we're in the first round of the voting. All those in favor of the recommendation to grant communication 67, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to two. Six to two, okay. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash 60, I'm sorry, C dash 67, order that the sum of $162,800 be appropriated to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation to move for the adoption of the order on communication 67. Are there any final comments or questions? Councillor Frida?
Yes, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President. I just want to make it clear, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I'm opposed to voting on the funds when we don't know exactly what we're voting on. So I'm going to vote in the negative.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, all set? Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Yea.
By a vote of seven, six to two, the communication, the order's been adopted. We have Counselor Ottinger and Counselor Frida voting in the negative on that. Thank you. We now move on to legal affairs. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much in your committee. We have petition nineteen dash nineteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Nineteen dash nineteen, approve a local letter of support or non-opposition to Middlesex Integrative Medicine for a proposed retail registered marijuana dispensary to be located at three oh five Second Avenue, Waltham Math, be signed by the mayor or the duly authorized members of the Lemnster City Council. I would like to refer to the clerk to see if we have received the letter from the mayor.
It's in your packet.
It's in your packet. I missed it somehow.
It's in the packet. It's signed by him and I had a verbal conversation with him.
Any, any supportive?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go to the other member of my committee, but the recommendation would be to grant?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Majority, unanimous decision to approve nineteen nineteen.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant nineteen dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Frida?
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. Nineteen dash nineteen has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to communication fifty-nine. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C fifty-nine, is Dean J. Mazarella, mayor. Request the city council vote to authorize the attached Electric Avenue easement. The last meeting we gave this further time, we were waiting for a referral from the planning department. And reading the letter back from Elizabeth Wood states that they're not meeting until May. So recommendation's going to have to be further time.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right for further time on communication fifty-nine. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Through the chair to the legal affairs chairwoman. Didn't we ask for a map? Do we have a map yet? No, we don't have a map. That, that's what I need to see before I can vote on this. So in addition to waiting for the planning board recommendation, I would also like a map that shows the easement. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
I believe Counselor Nebraska was looking into this further and fortunately, we know why he's not here tonight. I don't know if Counselor Bonanza has any more information.
Well, I, I spent quite a bit of time looking at this and I, I don't know, I haven't had any communication with the party that's affected by this, but apparently, you know, the encroachment exists there. So, yeah, apparently this guy must want to sell this property and, you know, he has to cure this problem. That's why I think there could be a time constraint here and I'm concerned about that. But if you look at the, the document, the city can ask for the property back anytime it wants. And if the city needs it, the city can get it back. And if there's, there's a whole bunch of obligations on the part of the grantee, and if any of those are breached, then the city can take it back, take the, take the easement back. So I, I don't, I don't see what the issue is. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to going forward with this. I don't, I'd like to see the thing move, move ahead, to be honest with you. I mean, I think there's enough cure to issue, like, the paragraph nine indicates the agreement shall terminate automatically in the event the city, in its reasonable determination, needs to widen the travel portion of the public way and/or install surface improvements for public way purposes, provided that the city gives the grantee at least sixty days notice. And then there's another provision that indicates the city reserves the right to pursue. This agreement expires or is terminated, provided the city should not seek damages. Yeah, it indicates that the city has the right to terminate if there's any breach of the conditions imposed on the grantee by the easement. So I, I don't know how the city gets hurt. And the encroachment's there. Apparently, the parking lot extends into the public way. That's what it's going to show. I've, I've looked at the property. I mean, it's easy to see. So I, I would, I'd like to go forward. That's my position.
Okay, is your position is to move forward in a positive way?
Yes.
Okay, are you on the floor? Back to the acting chairwoman for reconsideration on her position?
I don't necessarily disagree, but I don't, I am not comfortable moving forward without having the planning board recommendation.
I'm entertaining a motion on the floor right now regarding this issue.
I'll, well, I guess I'll make a motion that we move forward.
Do we have a second on that? We don't have a second. Another recommendation on the floor?
Recommendation for further time?
Recommendation for further time, Counselor Frida, seconded by Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yep.
Are there any comments or questions on the floor on further time? If not, all those in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, further time has been awarded. Thank you. Okay, so there was, let's see, right here. We're now going to move on to public service. We have thirty-eight dash nineteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Thirty-eight dash nineteen, National Grid and Verizon, to relocate one jointly-owned pole on Wheeler Street, beginning at a point approximately seventy-five feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Lancaster Street and continuing approximately twenty feet in a northwest direction. National Grid to relocate pole number one, thirty-five feet close to the Lancaster Street, to allow for a customer to install a new driveway. New pole to be fifty feet away from Lancaster Street. We had our public hearing again tonight and can, left the hearing open. I think there's still some questions about the location of this pole, and I understand our position is just the pole, but I think it's going to, there's a lot more that needs to be involved. It's not just the owners, it's the neighborhood. So my recommendation would be for further time again.
Thank you. Shall I yield the floor to your members? Counselor Frida?
I'm sorry?
Okay, yield the floor to your members.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Counselor Ottinger?
Further time, I agree.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Recommendation is unanimous to grant further time.
Thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation for further time on thirty-eight dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor David Cormier?
As usual, this piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer, so I have to abstain.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? All those in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing, further time has been awarded to thirty-eight dash nineteen. I'll ask the clerk to reach out to the owners of the property one more time, okay? Thank you. If you could report back to Counselor Frida on that as soon as you hear. Thank you. We are having a little bit of a glitch with emails again, so if you're not getting things, just contact the office and they'll work it out with you. Thank you. We now move on to Ways and Means and Veterans Affairs. I'll yield the floor to the chairwoman. We have petition fifty-one dash nineteen. Is the chairman, chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Fifty-one nineteen, Christopher Rivard requests a transient vendor's license for the sale of flowers and plants. It was given regular course at the last meeting. I do believe we have the reports from the police and the treasurer, so they are clear with the treasurer and the police department. So my recommendation would be to grant the request for the transient vendor's license, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Please requalify.
Yes, we have a unanimous recommendation to grant fifty-one nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counselor, sir, the recommendation right to grant fifty-one dash nineteen. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Counselor Frida?
Just a comment. Christopher Rivard's been around as long as we have. You know, he's been there for many, many years.
For sure. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, fifty-one dash nineteen has been granted. We now move on to petition fifty-two dash nineteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Fifty-two nineteen, Sterling Jewelers, Inc., renew the second-hand dealer's license for K Jewelers, number twelve eighty-five, located at one hundred Commercial Road. It was given regular course at the last meeting. We do have positive information from the treasurer and the police department, so my recommendation would be to grant fifty-two nineteen.
Thank you. Counselors, sir, the recommendation right to grant fifty-two dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, fifty-two dash nineteen has been granted. Thank you, Madam Chair. We now move on to new business. The first item of the new business, vote to establish a vote requesting or inviting the DPW Director Ray Racine down here to share with us information that is pertinent to the decision-making on finances and other policies that we are involved with, one way or the other, at the cemetery. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Make a motion.
Counselor David Cormier, seconded by Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing. We're going to invite Mr. Racine down, either for the next meeting or the one after that. So we're looking at May thirteenth to twenty-seventh at his convenience, and then I'll, I'll have a discussion with him to help him prepare the documents that we've requested from tonight's meeting from various councils. Any other items under new business? Okay, we now move on to the back page of the, I'm sorry, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Mr. President, I'm not sure if this is the exact time to bring it up, but we just have the, the Scrivener's Era on fifty-four dash nineteen.
Yeah, okay.
Our agenda has the establishment addresses thirty-five girl back. It should be the six oh nine Main Street.
Okay, we're going to go back to fifty-four dash nineteen. I'm going to yield the floor. I think it's for reconsideration. I'll vote first.
It's just first time on the calendar.
Yeah, we need to reconsider it first.
Reconsider the vote?
There's no vote. It was regular course.
It was regular course?
Yeah.
Okay, we can amend it at the next meeting. Thank you very much for catching that. Appreciate it. Mr. Bonanza, you're going to have plenty of proofreaders around here for your new book. Any other items under new business? If not, we're going to move on to page six. We have old business, beginning with communication six. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Does this require another recitation?
Mm-hmm.
C dash zero six, in accordance with section three dash nine of the Lemnster City Charter, a public hearing will be held on Monday twenty, April twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen at six forty P. M. in the council chambers, twenty-five West Street, Lemnster Math. The subject of the hearing will be the following loan order, and of course, that hearing was conducted. And the proposed loan order is as follows. Ordered, the mayor is authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain three parcels of land located on Central Street, Lemnster namely one oh six Central Street, one twelve Central Street, and one sixteen dash one twenty-four Central Street, which parcels are shown on assessor's map ninety-three as parcels five, six, and seven, for general municipal purposes, including without limitation for police station purposes, on such terms and conditions as the mayor deems in the best interests of the city, and further to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effect said acquisition and as, and as funding therefore. Further ordered, that the sum of two million dollars is appropriated for the cost of the foregoing acquisition and development of the property for police station purposes, including without limitation for the costs of remediation, demolition, site preparation, and/or design, and costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow two million dollars in accordance with General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, and/or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes, therefore, in accordance with General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, and further ordered that any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of project costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. Mr. Chairman, would be my position to grant C dash six, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the second member, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. Happy to report that the unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant communication six. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote beginning with Counselor Frida.
With pleasure, yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall record a yea by a vote of eight to nothing. The communication has been granted. Thank you very much. And I'll yield the floor to the clerk for further action steps on this, the next thing that's going to happen.
It's going to get published in full in the newspaper, and then it's going to go off to bond council and happily be funded by them, so we'll be good to go.
Okay.
All right, good.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. Are there any other items under old business? I know we have a fundraiser coming up for Michael's Run sometime in May. I can't remember. I want to say May seventeenth. There'll be lawn signs up around town.
Yeah.
There's Michael Wallace, and a lot of the money is dedicated toward helping people